...stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We also move to join, we're going to say that you bless our decisions, Father, you want to be one to benefit the people and in yourself pray through Christ and be amen.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner?
Here.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Here.
Commissioner Root?
Here.
Commissioner McNaster?
Here.
Commissioner Casper Roney?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here. I just wanted a little attention like bringing back.
Chairman Barnes?
Here. Next, I would entertain two of the minutes of December fifteenth, two thousand and seven. Two board commissioners made. So we'll move forward. And motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion, changes, irregularities, anything? If not all in favor of approving this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, asked, approved.
Excuse me, who, there were two that said aye at the same time, wasn't there?
You just pick.
Marks and Brown, correct.
For.
I couldn't tell who, who on once.
Casper, motion, second.
Next, to side, Commissioner Rook, who will have the votes?
I move to approve the invoice that a report stated twelve twenty-one, two thousand seventeen, amount of nine hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, invoice that a report dated twelve twelve, twenty seventeen, for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-five cents. One from twelve twenty, twenty seventeen, the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-two cents. One from one three, of two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-seven cents. One from one five, two thousand seventeen, the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand, ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents. One from another one, from one five, two thousand seventeen, the amount of one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. Another from one five, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two million, five hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents, for a total of five million, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars and two, two hundred and four, let me start that again, five million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and four dollars and ninety-two cents, for the wire transfer dated one three, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Support.
And warrants be drawn from treasury for paying. I think these are these seventeen, should they be eighteen?
They were drawn from twelve.
Regular marriages?
I don't know. From January of twenty seventeen?
That one should be eighteen, the others are just some ones.
Okay, all the January ones need to be eighteen. And the wire transfer needs to be eighteen as well?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
In support, are there any discussion, changes, irregularities that need to be discussed? If not, roll call, both Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McNaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Casper Roney?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes. Um, before I go to the opportunity for the public to address, just everyone keep in mind, we do have a, um, a new P L working, was our secretary, so, um, each chairman of your respected, uh, committee reports needs to at the very end add, uh, approval of the minutes of the January eighth and the January ninth meetings, please. That being said, uh, next is the, um, opportunity to the public to address the board, Mr. Shepherd.
I've addressed this board many times. A poll was taken, and three out of four Americans feel that we have way too much government, and less than a tenth of Americans trust our government. Margaret Marc McAvoy was a corrupt, as many know, and she brought Pete Preston on to extend our government. When she resigned, he should have gone right along with her, but our county commissioners decided to keep them on in a deceptive manner prior to Hartman Oi and John Plowman leading. The tactic of appointing or reappointing individuals prior to those headed out of office has cost the taxpayers greatly. There is no, no need for Pete Preston and his enterprise to continue on when we have county employees in zoning and equalization offices that are more than capable. Without Pete Preston's services, county taxpayers could save an excess of four hundred thousand dollars. We do not need more government, we need less government. As I have said before, people are tired of overtaxation, regulation, and hypertaxation. This especially is prevalent when our government refuses to listen to the people. The main reason we had American Revolution was the people were tired of the government, i.e. Great Britain, overtaxing and overregulating the people of thirteen colonies in seventeen seventy-six. People have grown weary of all the overtaxation and regulation that our government produces on an annual basis. It has surpassed the time that our government is to listen to the people. We, the people, need to stand together against oppression and fight for what is right. With that being said, those that are really concerned about what the people have to say and what's going on in the county, rest assured, that four million in excess that the government, or the Veterans Affairs Committee has in their little secret account, that'll pay for Pete Preston, that'll pay for a new drain commissioner truck. A county administrator, again. Thanks.
Leo Deason. What's going on, you guys, I'm Leo Deason, I'm with Woodward Commercial. Um, I came to the last board meeting kind of seeking advice and, um, counsel on how to proceed with a solar energy plan that, that I have, it's an opportunity for some land that, um, the county owns. The land is in Corona, um, it's up the street here, and I had passed out these LOIs, I understand you guys probably didn't bring those again, so I made more copies just in case, but I was advised to check with, um, the city of Corona to see if there would be a possibility to, um, change the zoning and make it possible for us to use that land, but then I kinda, I, I've kinda been butting heads with, with the, uh, solar energy company that they, they're saying that they want the LOI signed, the LOI is non-binding, i- if you guys sign it and say, hey, you know, a- all the LOI says is, hey, you know, we're willing to consider that this might be a possibility, if you guys can get the zoning changed, and if you guys can figure out everything, they need to do their engineering reports before they even can, would consider the next steps in checking to see if the zoning can be changed and checking to see those things. So he, the, the owner of the company had called me and said, hey, could you got, could you head back in there and kind of see where they were at and see if there was, if this was something that, do I need to make a presentation to you guys at the next board meeting to have you guys sign a letter of intent that's non-binding? Or do, i- is that something that I can have happen now, or is that, I mean, I know you guys said that you'd be open to consider it, so, to me, that is the equivalent of an LOI, but I just was seeking some sort of advice on, on projectile, where, where I should be going now.
Um, I'll speak for just a second. So this was brought back to my attention just yesterday, and I didn't even mention it, that yesterday's, actually, it was after yesterday's meeting, so I did not mention it. I don't know if you guys remember this, Jeremy's been involved in a little bit, I quite frankly kind of forgot about it, and I apologize, so, um, do we need to pass these out again?
Yeah, I have some.
And make sure that we do a due diligence on, uh, going over this information and put it back on next month's agenda, or do you guys feel comfortable about discussing it? What we might want to do, um, this month?
I want to refer it to economic development.
I'm sorry?
You want to refer this to economic development, and start there next month, and then work it out there.
That's what I would think, but I'm asking that for everybody.
And do you want?
Did anybody really go over it a whole bunch, or?
I'm familiar, and I remember a gentleman, he presented previously, I guess I just had a couple of quick questions for him, and one is, um, the reception you received from the city of Corona, it's a little unclear what they advise you, they're the primary zoning jurisdiction for the parcel?
Yes, so, so the parcel is in the city, I, I've contacted Joe Sawyer, kind of tried to clarify some things, but generally, the changing of the zoning would happen when you guys actually sign a binding lease that says, hey, we can do this. Um, he didn't, it didn't make it seem like it would be an issue to get a special use permit to use this, but it, more of an issue would be the, um, whether or not the land is actually going to work for the solar company, because it's proposed, it, it could work, but they haven't been able to do any engineering analysis at all on the property without an LOI.
But I guess my question is, if the city of Corona is the zoning jurisdiction, and they have control on issuing the permits for that to happen, I'm just curious, what is the commission's role?
We own the property.
Yeah.
So they might want permission, so permission to start the study, depending on the feasibility, does they go for changing zoning in that purchase?
Right, so.
Or, or lease.
Right, yeah, it would be a long-term lease. If this gets signed, then I can give them the green flag, I hand this to the company, they say, okay, we're going to check and make sure that this land will work and everything will iron out, and then when they have that, that my goal is to then, at the next commissioners' meeting, be able to bring an actual hard lease for you guys to present where you need to present it and review it and take your time and decide if that's viable for you guys.
Yeah, seems appropriate.
Committee. And I, I guess I apologize, maybe we're behind where we should be, but I want to make sure that this is put on economic and fiscal development next month, and I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to study this a little bit over the next month. Um, I, I just want to say, and I don't know if you've read through it, um, I'm not sure personally if I'm okay with a thirty-five-year lease on that property, um, and that being that, the, the county has a lot of, uh, of, uh, space constraints right now, and that, that is kind of a valuable, valuable piece of property, and I don't know if we want to tie that up with solar for eight thousand dollars a year for the next thirty-five years, when we may want to negotiate selling that property and selling some of our other stuff to buy a chunk of property that, that's, uh, large enough to, to move our health department and our, maybe someday jail and some of the other, uh, things that are on our wish list for, you know, ten, fifteen, whatever years down the road. That's, that's just my opinion, but the decision of this will be a board decision, and it will be voted on.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just ask that everybody look at it and bring this back next month, and then if you don't, then you come back and move from there.
Absolutely, and I, I included my business card on the top of those, I've, I've been in contact with Jeremy Root, he's been great, helped me out, um, but I put my business card, if, if anybody could sign it when they, when you guys do discuss it, um, just so I can get the ball rolling and have something hard copy that you guys can see and say, okay, is this worth it? He's also more than open to negotiate timeframe, he's more than open to negotiate price point, this is just like his base leasing operation is, is this document. So, just keep that in mind.
Sure. Can you, um, make sure you come to that, it'll be on Monday, um, the economic development subcommittee meeting?
This upcoming Monday?
No, a month, a month from now.
Okay.
I don't know what, what that date is, because we moved it, we moved it up, so fourteen through, twelve fifth, maybe February fifth, is that, is that a Monday?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah.
So.
February fifth?
February fifth, five o'clock here.
All right, perfect.
If you come, because that's when we first all into it, look at it, and then, and then I'll go, we pass it, then I'll go to Wednesday's, we do all, and then Thursday, fourth meeting, so, but it would help if you hear, if we have questions, whatever, on that Monday.
Yeah, absolutely, can do.
And most of the commissioners, even if they don't sit on the committee, several will lead you also.
All right, excellent. All right, perfect, any other questions or anything? All right, thanks for the time, you guys.
Thank you. Next, I believe we have a presentation from Mark Natalie, consultants.
Good evening.
Sir.
It's nice to see you, Olivia. Um, just a little background, uh, you retained our company to do a new pay system for your employees, uh, that's something that I do for, I think, most Michigan counties. Uh, in your case, that pay system was probably close to twenty years old, the existing one, and, uh, you went through a number of years where, well, everybody had those problems, but times were tight and employees didn't receive any raises. Um, so the old plan was really out of kilter, and, uh, that was really the objective of the study, was to create a new system for you that you could use going forward and make sure that you're market competitive, and, uh, make sure certainly that, uh, at the same time, you had something that was affordable. So you ended up getting a very, very big fat report, which was presented to each one of the board members, I think about two weeks ago, and, uh, I wouldn't blame you if you hadn't gotten through that yet, I thought it would be easier to give you some of the high points of it in this presentation, and, uh, certainly talk a little bit about the cost implications of what we put together for you, and, uh, and then certainly take any questions that you have about the project, or, uh, about what we found, or how this thing should be implemented, or what the, uh, union ramifications are, or anything else. So let me pass this out. And what I put together here is just a three-page outline, and the first page of that outline talks about what we did. Uh, I had a lot of contact during the study with, um, with Larry and, uh, Johnson in the Health Department, as well as Jeremy, um, but no other board members were involved, so I, I don't know if you're really privy to what we went through. This is about a six-month project, and, um, start to finish, we went through what, what I like to think of as four different phases. And the first phase of this project involved just getting to know all of the jobs, uh, you can't do this type of study, you can't do a market analysis, and you can't do any internal evaluation until you understand what you're dealing with. So we spent a lot of tasks and a lot of time just going through that. We also, when we do this type of study, like to have the employees involved, um, ultimately the employees are going to be the ones that are impacted and affected by this study, and I've always found that if you give them a cold shoulder, that they're usually not very receptive to what you put together. What we try to preach in doing this kind of study is you might not like the results, not everyone's going to feel that their pay or their recommended pay is where it should be, but what you're trying to do is to have everyone come out at the end of the study feeling that the study process itself was thorough and fair. So, just going through this phase one a little bit, we spent a lot of time on the front end getting this thing organized, and then we had, I believe, about six meetings, probably about one a month, um, I did with Larry and Jeremy to keep it on track, to give them progress reports. Um, on the front end, you have something, and I believe in your agenda tonight, you're referring to it as the Rye Plan. Um, Bill Rye was my partner until he retired, so that's the old system, the Rye Plan is your current pay grade structure, this one will replace the Rye system. We collected that Rye system and all the documentation that goes with it, you've got eight different bargaining units, seven, seven of them have collective bargaining agreements, one is a, a much larger non-union group, um, so we collected all of those as well, as well as a master list of all the employees, what classifications they're in, how much money they make, what their grade standing is, what their step is, all of those kinds of things we needed to see what's currently in place, so that we could start moving forward and creating something new. Uh, we had orientations for the employees to get them involved, I explained pretty much what I'm explaining to you, step by step, of what we were going to do during the study, took their questions, and we also had them fill out a job questionnaire, so everyone had a chance to fully describe their job. Uh, you have job descriptions, every county has job descriptions, job descriptions inevitably do not tell the whole tale about a job, uh, they probably do in most cases, but I, I guarantee you, there is not one employee that feels that the, uh, the job description is sufficient for understanding your job. So we had them fill out questionnaires, we got one back from every job classification in the study, and that's literally about a hundred. Um, and then I reviewed all of those and came back and interviewed the department heads and a number of the supervisors, made sure that we understood every single one of these jobs. So that's phase one of this, and, uh, as I'll say a little bit later, it's very important that this phase one gets done, if you don't understand the jobs, you're not going to do the rest of the study right. Uh, so this part of the study probably took about two months before we, we went through that whole process. Uh, we then moved on to phase two, which was looking at the market, and we tried to get a very broad look at the labor market to compare what's going on here in Chia Wasi in terms of what people are making and what kind of benefits are provided, and, um, literally everything we could about the particular classifications here as opposed to elsewhere. Uh, we started out with thirteen other counties that, if you average them up, come up to be about the same size. Uh, county government is probably your best market comparable, because you have so many positions that you don't find anywhere else. Um, we had the Health Department included in this study, a lot of the counties that we used as market comps don't have Health Departments, uh, they're larger agencies or they're separate, so we did another separate survey of Health Departments. Uh, we used several canned surveys to get private sector market data from, really, the SEMCOG seven-county areas, about the best, the cut that you can get, and you'll see that in the report as well for certain positions that are amenable to that kind of, of, um, private sector comparison. So a whole lot of data, and as this data came back, uh, from our surveys, it all got tabulated, we ended up getting good market data for about eighty percent of the jobs in the study, which is a lot. Uh, so, we had a good valid, um, market response and something that we could work with going forward in the study. Our phase three was putting together a new pay grade structure, and when you do that, there are two things you do, one is you put together the grade structure itself, it's a process called point factoring, uh, is how your old current system was constructed, and it's how this one's constructed as well. We have a plan that we use, a human resources plan, that has different job factors, uh, things like education, experience, and supervision, and technology, and I sit down with each job and score each job according to that plan, so, a job that requires a high school education gets a lower score for education, and some position requires a bachelor's degree. On the other hand, a job that has a higher technology, uh, application would get a higher score on that than probably a department head other than Pat, uh, who doesn't have to be all of that computer efficient, so each job has different characteristics. When we do the grade analysis, each job gets scored on each one of these factors, and each one comes up with a total score. Uh, what we do then is cut grades based on the scores, your scores run about eight hundred to three thousand, and each one of the grades contains two hundred points, so without looking at it, probably eight hundred to a thousand, a thousand to twelve hundred, that's each one of your grades, what you've done is evaluated each job based on the factors, and you've evaluated each job based on a comparison to all the other jobs. So what you're trying to achieve is internal equity, that's how we put the grade structure together. We take the market data then, and we put pay ranges on each one of the grades, uh, and that's kind of the centerpiece of this whole study, there is a new pay grade structure that's being recommended, um, not only for your non-union, but for all of your union groups. If you look in that report, and it can get a little confusing because of the number of union groups that you have, but what we've done is break it all down so that there's an applicable section in the report for each one of the bargaining units, so you can see where those positions are recommended in the grade structure for each group, and what the pay ranges are for each one of those bargaining units. The hope is that as negotiations go forward at the appropriate time, um, that this will be the guidepost, that this whole system and structure ideally, and I guess some counties do, are able to negotiate, uh, unchange the whole pay grade structure for, um, each one of the groups in their particular municipality. So, that is pretty much what we put together, the final report itself, similar, I think, to your current one, uh, is put together as a system, so that in the future, if you get a new job, or a job changes significantly, all the tools are in that report to evaluate the position, place them in a, a different, uh, pay rate if it's warranted. So let me give you some of the specifics on what we came up with, and what this thing is going to cost you, uh, as well as some feedback on your positions as well, because we did look at elected officials. Um, first off, on B, on page two, we look at red circled and green circled positions. What happens is, when we create a new pay range, sometimes we, and I should say ranges, because there's thirteen of them, we'll have some jobs that are paid either less or more than what we're recommending as a parameters. So we call it a green circle position, uh, if you have an employee whose current salary is less than what we're recommending as a minimum coming in the door. On the other extreme, you don't have too many of them, but you have a couple, there's positions that you run into in a study like this, where you put the range together, you've got the top of the range, and their current salary is higher than the top, so that's a red circle, that's problematic for that employee, because, um, that employee is obviously being paid more than, uh, than we're suggesting is fair for the job. So red circles, the employees that are paying, being paid too much, there were only four. Uh, so what we would suggest, and there's narrative in the report on this, is that those employees not receive any pay increases until such time as that salary falls within the range. So that, that's a fairly small group and not that substantial. On the other end, and I think it's a result probably of all those years when you didn't have pay increases, and all those years when the pay system wasn't updated, you've got a number of people who are green circled, whose current salaries are below what we're recommending for the minimum of the range, the range is based on the market. So there we've got forty-four employees, and they're in thirty-two classifications, um, that are down in this green circle category. To bring them up to the minimum, uh, if the county decides to do that, would be a cost of about ninety thousand dollars. Now, all the other employees fall within the ranges, so we've got a, probably a hundred and fifty employees who, whose jobs fall within what we're recommending as the range parameters. One issue here is this, as, if you adopt this new system, we've replicated all the steps and all the patterns for all your bargaining units, and, well, here's an example, assume that I work for the county and I make fifty thousand dollars, um, I'm in, I'm in Asme, and I make fifty thousand dollars, and I'm on step four. Our new system doesn't have a fifty thousand dollar step four, all the numbers are different, this isn't the old Rye system, all of the numbers are breaking out differently than they did before. In order to implement this, you're going to have to align every one of the employees with the new systems for their respective contractual circumstances, so in mine, there might be a step there for fifty thousand, one hundred dollars. One approach to doing this would be to take every employee, in my case, um, move me up to fifty thousand, one hundred dollars, take every employee and move them to the next highest step. highest step. Now, that might be a hundred bucks for me and it might be five hundred bucks for somebody else. So it's not real equitable. The idea here isn't to give people pay increases so much as to get them situated in this new system. You might do that, you might not. I don't know how you could get around it because ultimately you're going to have to adopt the new steps if you adopt the system. If you were to do that for all the employees, as well as move all those green circles that I talked about, the ninety thousand, up to the minimum, your total cost for implementation of this whole system would be about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. The breakdown on that, excuse me, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, a hundred and forty-four for the county, the other twenty-two thousand going for the health department. So your total implementation cost for both health and the county would be about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That's what we're talking about for putting this system into play and taking care of all those, all those issues or all those inequities that I just mentioned. The, page three on here, there's other sections of this report, including the section on your salaries. Section three of the report first deals with instructions for keeping this thing current. One thing that I think went wrong over the years here is there were budget constraints and the like, is that the salary ranges didn't get updated. What you should be doing, once you adopt these salary ranges, is each year you've got to go out and look at the market. Whether you look at CPI or whether you survey all of these counties that we use as market comparables, whatever metric you use, and I've suggested a couple in the report, this year, for example, many counties are doing two percent increase on ranges. The ranges need to be increased each year to keep pace with the labor market. So that ten years from now, as you've got this system and you're working with it, those ranges are still representation, representative of reality, of what's going on out there. They have to be updated every year. So there is a recommendation in section three on updating those ranges. The first adjustment would be January first, twenty nineteen. Certainly that's, that's a policy issue and you'll make your own minds up on that, but that's what we would suggest. There's also instructions in there, as I mentioned, for reclassifications, how to use this system. It's fairly straightforward. I know in the past, the counties used me for appeals, but for reclassification. But depending on what you do with your county administrator, you might end up with someone who's, who's quite skilled in doing that internally, and a lot of my clients do. There's a section four in the report on employee benefits to give you a more rounded look at compensation. And in truth, you guys have done a pretty good job. When I look at all of the counties in terms of what's going on, what we see is a reduction in benefits where it used to be, I think really heaven in terms of the kinds of benefits that were provided, traditional Blue Cross Blue Shield, a lot of them had retiree healthcare, a lot of them had longevity payments, no cost sharing on healthcare, all of those kinds of things. You don't have a lot of those legacy costs, thank God. You didn't put yourself in that position or you've worked hard to avoid those future costs. There isn't any longevity pay here, there is no retiree healthcare here. You've closed your DB plan, your defined benefit retirement plan. New employees are required to have a bridge plan and I think with one group, a hybrid plan. That's really reducing your future liability. Healthcare premium cost sharing is at twenty percent, which is what everybody's striving for right now. Employees have to start paying part of that freight or everybody's going to go broke. So you've done good things and you've been prudent. I've put a few suggestions in there on things that you could look at trend-wise. PTO is one of them. That's personal time off, what you see in a lot of counties and a lot of municipalities and a lot of employers too. They've gotten rid of sick time and they just have one all-purpose day. So you're not chasing employees around to make sure they're sick or not sick. You take their vacation, you take their personal days, you take the sick time and you put it in one category called PTO. They get so many of those a year and you eliminate the banks. So you've eliminated all the liability for those sick banks. Typically what the counties will do is tie it to a short-term disability policy so employees have some protection against long-term sickness. But the idea here and the objective here with this, as well as other things you've already done, is to keep that future liability down so that when you're not sitting here anymore, you're not leaving a mess for the next person that comes and follows you on this board. And you're not doing that now, but there's always ways that you can make it a little better. The PTO thing might be something you look at when you look at negotiations. Section five of the report, we looked at elected officials' salaries. We looked at clerk, we looked at drain commissioner, we looked at treasurer, we looked at prosecutor. We looked at register of deeds and we looked at sheriff. What we found is you go out and compare those positions to other county elected officials with similar responsibilities, many of them statutory, is that your elected officials are paid somewhere between five percent and twenty percent less. Five percent for the sheriff, I'm not going to be presumptuous enough to try to spend your money. But that's something that you can look at in section five of the report. I've set up model salary ranges for your elected officials. I don't know if you would go that route. Currently, four of them are paid at the same level. I've averaged the market data so you can see what range would apply to those four. And I think you'll probably hear, probably hear a little bit from them in terms of the disparity there in wages and market. Now, for you as commission members, it's kind of a mixed bag. If I look at base wages, what you're paid, you're about thirty-five percent lower than the market. And we're talking here about thirteen different counties. So it's not a small market sample. It's also very common that they have different salary structures for board chairs and sometimes vice chairs. I think eleven of the thirteen have a different, different base rate for the board chair as opposed to commissioners in recognition of the extra time. I realize all of you have responsibility policy-wise as commissioners. Unless this is different than most counties, you probably have your board chair spending a little more time than the other commissioners on administrative matters. So thirty-five percent below market, if I looked at the board chair versus board chair salaries, it's forty-one percent below market or fifty-nine percent of what the others are making. You need to temper that though a little bit and I've included all of the data in the report. Some receive, most receive median pay and you do too. So as you review this data and make decisions on compensation, keep that in mind, benefits as well. You, as commission members, receive some benefits. If you look at the data in the report, you'll see that the others receive, most of the others receive a similar benefit package, but there are some that don't receive benefits. So there's a couple of different elements in play here and ultimately, that's what you're going to have to look at when you look at your own salary. On first glance and, and what goes in your pocket, you're underpaid. So it is what it is. The rest of the report, some of the appendices, it can get confusing because there's so many pages, but appendix C is all of the market data. So if there's something particular that you would like to look at, it's there. Appendix D is probably the best source, I think, to look at the pay grade structure. It gives you a little more information, although in section two of the report, if you read the report, you'll see the whole pay grade structure is there as well. And appendix E contains all of the benefit information. I gave you a narrative, but there's plenty of stuff that I didn't narrate. And if there's particular things you want to look at and/or you have some benefit strategies that you're thinking about, it's probably a good place for you to get some information. And that's it. I think I've shut off and certainly take any questions that you have.
Did you find any anomalies with our phone, like we have more bargaining units than average or we have departments that are really understaffed or some that are overstaffed? Is there anything that stuck out with the comparable counties?
We didn't, we weren't looking at staffing, but I do enough staffing studies that I would say no. I didn't see any blatant overstaffing. You do have a lot of unions, a lot of bargaining. And there's counties like Saginaw or some of those in those industrial areas, they have a lot too. But for a somewhat rural county, yeah, you get too many.
And so not necessarily the number of employees there, unionized, just so many different units, right?
All of those bargaining units, yeah, take, it takes time and attention to negotiate all those contracts and there's costs involved in negotiating those contracts. Sure, there's some me-tos there on a lot of that, but, but the more you have, the more administrative output you have to, you have to put into. You know, you're never going to get away from having the public safety unions, everybody has those, but when you get into office employees, yeah, you got a few.
Quick question, back on page two, toll study implementation cost of a hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Clarify for me, if we were to start this today, right now, would it cost us a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to bring everybody up? Is that, am I reading that right or?
Yeah. If you, if you could do it.
But is that for the entire year or is that just to get us to where we need to be and then start from there?
Yeah.
So this is a startup cost?
Yeah.
And then the remainder of the year, like I said, using the example, if it was started today, we'd have to increase everybody's wage by a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars and then maintain that obviously for the rest of the year.
Yeah.
So this isn't a annual cost, this is just a start.
That's your startup cost, but it's going to be annualized anyway.
Right, I mean, I understand that, but this gets us started and then the rest of the year, continue to pay at that higher rate, which will add to the hundred and sixty-six. So actually, the first year, wouldn't it, I'm asking if the one sixty-six...
First year would be a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
For the entire year?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
Oh, okay.
Because I thought that was just to get us on track and then go from there, but that's not the case.
It depended what, what else you decided to do, but if all you wanted to do was get this implemented, started on, on its path, that's your, that's your cost. Now, if there were step increases during the year, you would have additional costs. I would suggest you keep this as cheap as possible though, for the first year until you get this thing implemented.
Question, on the bottom of page two, it just says, another longer-term consideration focuses on pay range, number of steps?
Yeah.
And focusing on non-union employees or wider ranges suggested, number seven.
Right, sure, I'd be glad to. And I skipped it because I was going all over the place. So right now, you have six steps. Your employees go, they're hired and then there's five more steps. And each year they go through one step. So in five years, they reach the top. What is suggested in the report is that we increase that a minimum of nine steps so that they would have to go through more steps and it would last a longer period of time. And here's the, here's the catch on this. When we built, when I built these pay ranges, I asked all the counties, in fact, all our sources, to give me the range maximums. Don't tell me what somebody's making right now. Give me the range maximum you pay for this position. So your pay ranges in this report are built, everything's built off the top. So you can stretch it down as far as you want and it doesn't change anything. The top never changes. So by taking it down further, wider, thirty percent wide, nine steps, you're going to hire people at a cheaper rate, so you're going to save some money there. You're giving them more steps to walk through so they won't get fed up with this plan, they won't red circle or I should say cap out as, as quickly. And it gives you more budget control too. You could go eleven steps, you could go thirteen. We sat down and talked about this and that's the example I put in there. But I have clients that have gone as high as thirteen steps. That thirteen step is going to cut the, if you've got thirty percent, obviously, you've got ten steps, it's going to be three percent, three percent, ten times three. The more steps you have, the lesser the percentage between each one of those gradations. When you're at six, twenty-two percent is where they're at right now with five increases. So you're at about four percent for each step.
And is that considered a cost of living increase or that would be on top of a step?
Yeah, on top of. What it, what is considered is two things. One is the notion that as people are in their job longer, they get better at it and they're worth more. So they should be higher in a pay range than they are now. The other one, and I'll be real honest with you, the step systems with a pretty much automatic increase work well in county government because there's so many power bases. You've got six administrative elected officials, all championing their people and they've all got some power, they're all elected, you have power, you're elected. There's so many, it's not like a city where you've got your city manager and a council manager former government or, and a weak mayor and just a council and a manager with pretty well-defined roles. County administrators sitting in the middle of a firestorm with all of this, without having some established way of paying people and moving them through a salary range, everybody would be fighting all the time.
Just want to follow on, this says, this focuses on non-union, but then this could be a future objective for other groups, meaning union employees?
Yeah, you're going to have to negotiate that. And right now, they're running at six. The only ones that, that I think would be really resistant to that idea would be the public safety, where you've got compulsory arbitration. They weren't in this study, but typically, if they do go to arbitration or even in negotiations, they're pointing at other communities for, see what they do, this is what we should do. Most communities for police officers only have four or five steps. So they would be the exception, but for everybody else, I don't, I don't see an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jeremy?
I thought it was a good study. I think you did a good job. All the data was pretty thorough. Surprised by some of it and we've got a big undertaking, but I know we met several times and really refining the data as best as possible, but.
Yeah.
Overall, it's a good study.
I hope it works, it's overdue.
I know, actually, I don't know, we've only had this for, right, not even a week, so about just over a week, so most of us haven't studied it very thoroughly yet, so we have, we have a little ways to go. And I guess my biggest concern at this point is just how we're going to get it all out.
Yeah, and it'll be a slow process. For the non-union, you can implement whenever you want. For the union groups, you're going to have to negotiate the changes. As I said, I hope that everybody was pretty open to this study and getting this done because they realized they've gotten so far behind by not having pay increases for five So I think they'll be amenable to potentially accepting that too. If I can do anything, let me know. I would suggest you keep that outline and read it before you read the report because those are your key points and you'll see... because those are your key points, and you'll see them again and be able to put them in context. There's a lot of reading.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, we are going to committee reports. Agricultural preservation. CACS.
Haven't had a meeting yet, uh, a new, a new director has been hired, but we haven't had him yet, or I haven't met with him yet.
Central Board of Chief.
Uh, haven't had a meeting yet, but they're in the building, they're up, they're operational there.
Community corrections advisory board. Commissioner Olshausen, we haven't had a meeting yet. Uh, GLS, Region Five, Commissioner Roth.
Yeah.
First meeting is, uh, mental health authority board. Ralph and Olshausen.
We have a meeting Monday. On the finance, everyone's on, we just changed our name, so we don't call them mental health anymore.
And call it what again?
Health, in longness.
We need to change that out here, so.
Health in longness.
Is that right, Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Midwest Michigan Authority Board.
They'd be next to me.
MTA, Commissioner Roth.
Uh, we met the second this year, uh, the township. I didn't really have much, I gave them just our year and our accomplishments. Next one is maybe six, but.
Parks director, the public health, Markson Row.
Nothing really new, what's on the agenda today?
Talking about building and working space, some ways.
Coastal on aging.
Again, meetings are later.
On the B triple A.
And then.
The next Michigan development board.
We have not made it.
Uh, GSD, Michigan Works.
We haven't made it.
Planning Commission.
Had a meeting last, last week, and, uh, obviously, some of the stuff has worked our way through our committees. Still waiting on a few townships, for it to come back on the wind turbine. There's three townships, they've responded yet, four townships. Waiting on that. And there was an individual here, they're from Bennington Township, also wanting to get a special use permit, we're only changing whatever to do weddings out at their little flower waterfall retail sale area, so. There's going to have to be some work done on, on the zoning and, and definitions for who can have these weddings, where they can have it. I mean, there's going to be some work done, because a lot of people are acquiring, a lot of businesses, we're going to see that. I guess we're going to see more of that this year. And everybody that comes, not every firm is the same, not every business is the same, and there's a lot of places that are very unique that want to do weddings. So we have to see more of that.
Just a question for you, I, I do get a lot of questions still. Is there, is there any indication that there's going to be a rollout of the new ordinance, the new wind turbine ordinance, anytime soon this month? I know there's a meeting at the end of the month. Also, I mean, I've been guessing that probably, not having heard much, but February, I would guess that something might show up.
We were given, we were given, uh, we were given reports from all the townships. They had responded, and then we were given response when it entered the filings. I had a conversation with the chair about that timelines, and it was kind of uncertain, because we're still waiting, we're still waiting on some townships. Because that was my question, was okay with it, it's more touring until the end of June. It's June, and obviously, I did six months, but we're also, if you remember, we were going to have all this feedback in last August, and it's just, it seems like some of the stuff's dragging. I asked her, I just kind of talked to her, I'm like, maybe, do you think we can get it done in six months? And obviously, their response was, you know, a lot of people want it done, whether you're for it or against it, a lot of people want it done in six months. I questioned though, if we're going to be able to get it done in six, within six months, because we only meet, we only meet once a month, so when it comes up to us, if we have changes, we send it back down, we send it back up, I mean, there's. Once it's done, that's, back and forth, that's three, four months. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure we're going to be able to get it done. I'm not saying, I'm not asking to extend the more touring right now, but don't be surprised if we have to extend it longer. I just don't see how we're going to get it done within six months. Especially since some of these townships haven't responded, and sometimes townships that don't respond, that means, okay, we're okay with that. But I know some townships that haven't responded yet, they still have changes they want made or they have comments, so. So it's in, it's in the works, but I, I mean, I was actually surprised, we kept the whole meeting and I said at the end, like, no wind turbine discussion, so this was passed out, it's kind of in, in a holding pair right now.
I would think that someone would have to set a deadline for response, it's not going to happen any day.
Yeah, I mean, I personally feel comfortable, I mean, I'll push more touring on until we have all the answers we want, I'm not going to.
We may, I mean, unless, unless you need to, but just so everyone knows here, don't be surprised if, you know, all of a sudden, it's March or April, it's a couple of months from now, and I make the comment, we need to send this, because we're not going to have.
We came this far, we're not going to cut ourselves.
Sure, and I have everybody's input, and I have all the information, I have it all edited properly, so.
Okay, thank you.
And if anybody, you know, if anybody wants copies, you can make copies of where the townships are right now, if you guys want to start reading, uh, what individual townships think, so.
Shall I see economic development partnership? I conclude all committee reports, we are now going to, uh, move on with our, um, social community reports. Economic and physical development.
Mr. Chair. I move to authorize ordinance eighteen dash oh one dash oh one, amending Article twelve, special use permit, section twelve point two point three to section twelve point two point six, county special use permit ordinance.
Second. A motion and a second, is there any more discussion on this matter? Roll call vote, please, in court.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to authorize ordinance eighteen dash oh one dash oh two, amending Article eighteen zoning board appeals, section eighteen point one to section eighteen point four, county zoning board appeal ordinance.
Second. A motion is second, is there any discussion on this matter? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
And move to authorize the extension of the December eleventh, twenty fourteen contract for equalization services with Preston Community Services LLC, from January one, twenty eighteen through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, with no change across our terms.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And move to authorize an increase in trade inspector's fees from thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars per inspector for building, handling, electrical, and plumbing inspections.
An emotion is for, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
And move to approve the minutes from the January eighth Economic and Physical Development Committee meeting.
Support. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The booth's under court security.
Thank you, Commissioner McMaster. Commissioner Root, County Finance Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to authorize contracts for one-time service with Long Gar Fire and Security System Incorporated, the amount of six thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars for fire suppression system inspections, the work release, work release building, the county courthouse, the sheriff's department, and survey building, we pay for the building grounds, maintenance budget one oh one, two five eight, we go forward, zero zero four.
A motion is support, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to authorize budget amendment seventeen point zero one point zero one for adjustments in the two thousand eighteen county budget.
Second. A motion is support, is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
Move to authorize the county administration office to hire an executive assistant to fill a vacancy at pay grade five on the RISE scale, with a salary range from twenty-nine thousand three hundred forty-four dollars to thirty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars, and operate as board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Second. A motion is support, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to authorize the best of affairs office to hire a director, benefit counselor, to fill a vacancy at pay grade seven on the RISE scale, with salary range of thirty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars, to forty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars, and operate as board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Second. A motion is support, is there any discussion?
And this is the corrected amount from?
It is the corrected amount. Roll call vote, please.
Chairman Root, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to authorize funding of the twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to assist the great commission with the replacement of a truck, and authorize board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support. A motion is support, is there any discussion, Mr. Gary?
Yeah, I thought we were going to give him the money, he's going to pay us back in a quick time.
We did discuss that, and, um, I said I would sit down, let him, let him work something out. Um, and then the, the, um, great commissioner has agreed to it, and I will bring back the agreement to show everybody at the next meeting, we will be, we will make some sort of agreement for him to, uh, help pay some more of this back.
If that's, if that's legal, we can do it.
Yes.
Would you ask that question, is there a legality question we need to look into?
Yeah, we just wanted to see if his revolving fund, his assessment fund can pay the county back, we don't think it assess to.
There was just one about Commissioner Olshausen's concerns, that, that money should be coming out of that revolving fund. There's not enough money in there to take care of that, he needs a truck by spring, so we're going to go ahead and do it. Um, I'm sure it's illegal, we'll make sure, if there's any problems, we will, make sure that they're in front of you, and, uh, and then if he has to make time over it, or, you know.
And this isn't managing, this is, we're putting up twenty, and then he's responsible if he wants to.
As we can charge about thirty-two thousand dollars, we know that.
So, we're tall, right?
Yes. Other questions, roll call vote.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
No.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to authorize starting the process to hire a part-time coordinator.
Support. A motion is support, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who seconded that? Thank you.
Motion carries.
I move to authorize accepting the Teamsters Command Unit Agreement for a five-year contract, starting January first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second. Motion is support, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to authorize accepting the Teamsters non-supervisory unit agreement for a five-year contract, starting January first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen? Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes from the January eighth, two thousand eighteen Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
Support. Motion is support, any discrepancies, any concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries.
I conclude my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Root. Public Safety in Courts, Commissioner Cascarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just two items. Uh, I move to authorize the sheriff's office to hire a one full-time corrections officer, the key OLC corrections officer, range of thirty-eight thousand fourteen dollars to forty-two thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars to fill a vacancy.
Support. Motion is support, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Olshausen? Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from the September, the Public Safety Reports of January ninth, twenty eighteen.
Support. Motion is support, any corrections, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cascarelli. Health and Human Services, Commissioner Root.
I move to authorize an agreement with Upper Peninsula Healthcare Solutions, the amount of a hundred dollars for membership period. A membership fee for a period of one-one eighteen through twelve thirty-one eighteen, authorize Larry Johnson Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Support. Motion is support, um, it's a hundred dollars, but it's a, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Olshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
Move to authorize declaring opioids a public nuisance in Tri-Las County.
Second. A motion and, uh, support, Commissioner Marks, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, the only thing I have to add is that this is passed, we'll get the actual language and resolution number. Uh, trying to get today from Beam Beam, haven't gotten it yet, but, uh, it's something to add. And then, uh, next, uh, we will probably begin the discussion, uh, maybe have Beam Beam come and give us a presentation on what it takes. Uh, anybody here a little bit, want to join us, uh, last week, last week, yes.
So the board is, so that's a desire of the board. At this point, we are just, uh, simply declaring it a public nuisance, and that, you know, this board knows that, um, drugs and stuff are a problem in this county, and we have to, uh, be on board to do something about it.
Mr. Chair, um, if we could talk about the opioids, um, maybe we need to redo this, re-vote on this. re-vote on this, and say, authorize declaring the misuse or the use of opioids a public nuisance in Chilwell County, because to say.
I call the question, sorry. Let's go. Let's just go over.
But then that's saying somebody who's having surgery, we shouldn't give opioids.
I don't think that's what that's about, you know. I'll disagree with that. I call the question.
Sorry, question's uncalled. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I move to approve the minutes for January ninth, Health and Human Services Committee meeting.
I'll support that. Kind of motion in support, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Ruff. Just a couple of things. So, this, we have another motion that I, that I'm gonna read, and I would ask for somebody to present. It's not necessary, it's more of a blessing than anything from this board, but just to authorize the execution of a final warrant D reflecting the reversion of buildings located on Pleasant View land owned by the city of Corona, under the terms of the original D, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Under discussion, what that is, is, um, that, that's just something, it's part of what's going on, um, we have, you know, they're taking the building back, but we have to, we have to authorize this D and get, get title search, get everything cleared, so that the city of Corona can take over on February first. I did meet. Also, for the city of Corona, today, we had about an hour meeting, Commissioner Marks came in at the end, I don't know. So, pretty much as stands, right now, um, on the seventeenth, Pleasant View will be moving out, they have the rest of the week to clean up. On the twenty-second, the following Monday, um, we're gonna, and we don't have it set up yet, but the county elected officials, department has, or whatever, are gonna have a chance to go through and see if there's anything they want. I think there's one or two townships that ask, they might go look around, build up. After that point, Sheridan Realty is gonna come in, they're gonna auction everything off. What's left to go, either the city of Corona has the option to keep, or the Pleasant View will have to dispose of it properly. As of February first, we will no longer have any ownership or control in Pleasant View. I have a lease here that we're working on, the city of Corona. Basically, at this point, they're asking that we do nothing but maintain the two buildings. They're asking for no money, no lease money, free, not necessarily free, and I don't think that's the word to say, to use, but, um, that we can stay in these buildings, or maintaining them. And I said that at some point in the next three to six months, that myself and maybe Commissioner Marks, or whoever, I'll point somebody maybe to come with me, that we're gonna sit down and we're gonna try to come up with a master plan of what we wanna do for, and it may be similar in that, because we'll come up with a master plan of what we wanna do for the county in the future, for, uh, building for the health department, possibly a new jail someday down the road, buildings and grounds, uh, drain commission, so they would like to sit down and do a master plan. Um, they, we got land out there, like I said, we need to discuss, you know, if we wanna put, um, solar stuff out there, or if we, you know, we may wanna sell that excess land, and sell some of our other excess land that maybe is too small, we have ten acres that the city of Corona is certainly interested in. I'm not by any means willing to give that land away, but, um, I think ten acres is too small for any kind of, uh, a project that I foresee in my mind for the overall use of the county in a, say, a fifty-year plan down the road. So, that may be something that we wanna sell or negotiate, um, to get rid of, and they said they would sell or negotiate that land, keep the buildings and grounds, but I'm, I'm not sure, and I'm just talking about my personal opinion, and it'll be at the, uh, up to this board to make all these final decisions, certainly not mine, but, um, you know, we, we may or may not even want the buildings and grounds, buildings up there, you know, we, we can lease someday, come into a, a shorter or long-term lease, but it'd be my intent to, to someday have a, a plan, a fifty-year plan or something, and have all of our buildings on, uh, one ground, and some building will be there. That's where we ended up, that's where I ended up with Pleasant View and the city of Corona today. And the other thing I got is, uh, I know everybody's dying to know more about this book. Us commissioners ourselves do not know enough about it right now, it is not public knowledge yet, until we've had a chance to go through it and review it. We are not gonna release it. It would be my intent that we, uh, get this together, and that, uh, by the, by our next meeting, that we at least implement this for our regular employees, and start working on, on, uh, all the contracts with the unions.
But just along those lines, can, um, I mean, obviously, we have to be able to pay for this, are, are we gonna also get information as to how we're gonna pay for this?
Yep. We're gonna have to sit down, and I mean, just sit down a couple of us at a time, and